The legislature is back in session. We are in the voting file and please make sure that everyone has copies of all of the bills. We're going to go ahead and start with bill number thirty-four dash thirty-two. I'm going to ask the clerk to please read the title.
Bill number thirty-four dash thirty-two COR, as amended by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations and further amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, R. J. Resfisco, Vicente Bency Pangolinan, Michael F. Houston Nickless. An act to add new section seven-one-seven-eight and seven-one-seven-nine to chapter seven of Title sixteen Guam Code annotated relative to vehicle registrations.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Resfisco.
Aye.
Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Bill number thirty-four dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Bill number thirty-four dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number one-thirty-one dash thirty-two.
Bill number one-thirty-one dash thirty-two COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure and Maritime Transportation, introduced by TC Ada. An act to amend section F and to add a new subsection G to section three-three-zero-one of chapter three Title sixteen Guam Code annotated relative to establishing speed limits.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Resfisco.
Aye.
Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Resfisco. Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Bill number one-thirty-one dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Bill number one-thirty-one dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-two-seven dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number two-two-seven dash thirty-two COR, as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs and amended on the floor, introduced by TC Ada, TR Munya Barnes, R. J. Resfisco. An act to add a new chapter eighty-two to Title twelve Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing the creation of the Guam Streetlight Authority to issue bonds to finance the purchase and installation of new LED streetlights.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Uggan.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Resfisco.
Aye.
Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Sinicalis.
Pass.
Senator Sinicalis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Bill number two-two-seven dash thirty-two received ten yea votes, five nay votes. Bill number two-two-seven dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-eight dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number seventy-eight dash thirty-two COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Vicente Bency Pangolinan, TR Munya Barnes. An act to add a new subsection D to section three-one-zero-two-point-three of chapter three of Title seventeen Guam Code annotated relative to including a representative from the mayor's council of Guam to the Guam Education Board.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye.
Senator Resfisco.
Senator Resfisco, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Pass.
Senator Sinicalis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Bill number seventy-eight dash thirty-two COR received fifteen yea votes. Bill number seventy-eight dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-zero-two dash thirty-two COR. I mean, two-zero-three. Change my glasses.
Bill number two-zero-three dash thirty-two COR, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land and amended on the floor, introduced by Chris M. Duennas, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Tommy Morrison, V. Anthony Ada. An act to add a new chapter forty-five A to Division two of Title ten Guam Code annotated relative to establishing the Plug-in Electric Vehicle Rebate Program Act.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye.
Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Resfisco.
Aye.
Senator Resfisco, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Pass.
Senator Sinicalis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Sinicalis.
Pass.
Senator Sinicalis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Bill number two-zero-three dash thirty-two received eleven yea votes and four nay votes. Bill number two-zero-three dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-sixteen dash thirty-two LS.
Bill number two-one-six dash thirty-two LS, as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations, introduced by Judith T. Wampat, EDD, TR Munya Barnes, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D. An act to add a new section five-one-three-four to chapter five of Title nineteen Guam Code annotated relative to enacting principles of balanced approach and restorative justice in the juvenile criminal justice system between the victim and offender.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Resfisco. Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Bill number two-sixteen dash thirty-two received fifteen yea votes. Bill two-sixteen dash thirty-two LS is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-seventy-five dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number two-seven-five dash thirty-two COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economics Development and Senior Citizens and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to amend subsection N of section eight-zero-one-zero-nine of chapter eighty of division four and to add a new item fifteen to section one-two-two-zero-three-C of article two of chapter twelve, all of Title ten Guam Code annotated relative to ensuring the sanctity of the medical peer review process at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Resfisco. Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
No.
Bill number two-seventy-five dash thirty-two received fourteen yea votes, one nay. Bill number two-seventy-five dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-sixty-seven dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number two-six-seven dash thirty-two COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure and Maritime Transportation and further amended on the floor, introduced by Michael F. Houston Nickless, TC Ada. An act to amend section six-six-five-zero-one, six-six-five-zero-three, six-six-five-zero-four, six-six-five-zero-five, six-six-five-zero-seven, and six-six-five-zero-eight of article five and section six-six-seven-zero-one of article seven, all of chapter sixty-six, title twenty-one Guam Code annotated, relative to strengthening the provisions in Guam's Building Law regarding the repair or demolition of unsafe structures.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
No.
Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Pass.
Senator Luntiaco, pass. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Resfisco. Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
No.
Bill number two-sixty-seven dash thirty-two received thirteen yea votes, two nay votes. Bill number two-sixty-seven dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-seventy-nine dash thirty-two LS.
Bill number two-seven-nine dash thirty-two LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by TR Munya Barnes, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Judith T. Wampat, EDD, TC Ada. An act to provide for the Guam Environmental Protection Agency conducted sustainable materials management study and the implementation of a one-year pilot project, demonstrating the ability of Guam to develop a beneficial use for discarded glass bottles that would, among other things, divert glass from the La Zan Municipal Sanitary landfill and for other purposes.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, nay. Senator Luntiaco.
No.
Senator Luntiaco, nay. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Pass.
Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, pass. Senator Resfisco.
Senator Resfisco, aye.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Pass.
Senator Sinicalis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Morrison.
Pass.
Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Sinicalis.
Pass.
Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Bill number two-seventy-nine dash thirty-two received eleven yea votes, four nay votes. Bill number two-seventy-nine dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-eighty-two dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number two-eighty-two dash thirty-two COR, as amended by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs and Judiciary and further amended on the floor, introduced by Grant T. McCready, Chris M. Duennas, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Michael F. Houston Nickless, TR Munya Barnes, R. J. Resfisco, Tommy Morrison. An act to add a new subsection E to section three-seven-point-one-zero and to amend section three-seven-point-two-zero, all of chapter thirty-seven, Title nine, Guam Code annotated relative to the crime of burglary in schools which may be cited as the Safer Schools Act of two thousand and fourteen.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, pass. Senator Resfisco. Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinan, nay. Bill number two-eighty-two dash thirty-two received twelve yea votes, three nay votes. Bill number two-eighty-two dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-sixty-four dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number two-sixty-four dash thirty-two COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Grant T. McCready, TC Ada, R. J. Resfisco, TR Munya Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Tommy Morrison, Chris M. Duennas. An act to add a new subsection L to section six-one-zero-one of article one and to amend section six-four-zero-zero of article four, all of chapter six, Title eleven, Guam Code annotated, relative to prohibiting the sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes to minors.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Luntiaco.
Aye.
Senator Luntiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan.
Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Resfisco. Senator Resfisco, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number two sixty-four dash thirty-two, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill number two sixty-four dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two ninety-seven dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number two-nine-seven dash thirty-two, C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Vicente Bencii Pangolinan, T.R. Munya Barnes. An act to amend section one-one-zero-five of Chapter One, Title Nine, Guam Administrative Rules, relative to the importation of cattle.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, nay. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risficio. Senator Risficio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number two ninety-seven dash thirty-two, received one ye, well, fourteen ye votes, one nay. Bill number two ninety-seven dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two ninety-eight dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number two-nine-eight dash thirty-two, C O R, as amended by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs and Judiciary. Introduced by Brant T. McCready, V. Anthony Adda, Tommy Morrison. An act to amend subsections A and B and add a new subsection O to section six-seven-point-four-zero-one-point-four and to amend subsection B and add a new subsection E to section six-seven-point-four-zero-one-point-nine, of Chapter Sixty-Seven, Title Nine, Guam Code annotated, relative to punishment for the delivery, dispensing, manufacturing and importation of controlled substances which may be cited as the Methamphetamine Incarceration Reform Act of two thousand fourteen.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risficio. Senator Risficio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Speaker Wampat. I'm good. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill number two ninety-eight dash thirty-two, receive fifteen ye votes and one nay vote. That's what you have. Oh, so you're reading across it out then? So it's still fif- okay, that's one. Okay, so it's fifteen ye votes then. Okay, guys gotta... All right, so fifteen ye votes, a bill number two ninety-eight dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number three-zero-eight dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number three-zero-eight dash thirty-two, C O R, as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development and Senior Citizens. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez, Jr. An act to amend subsection A of section eight-zero-one-zero-five, chapter eighty, division four, title ten, Guam Code annotated, relative to providing for a representative of the Guam Memorial Hospital Volunteers Association to serve as an ex officio member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risficio. Senator Risficio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Bill number three-zero-eight dash thirty-two, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill number three-zero-eight dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number three-twenty-eight dash thirty-two, C O R. And I'd like to let everyone know that there's a large attachment that's available on the website and a digital, uh, attachment will be transmitted with this bill. That's the master plan. So bill number three-twenty-eight dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number three-two-eight dash thirty-two, C O R, introduced by T.C. Adda, R.J. Risficio. An act to approve and adopt the Capital Improvement Project, CIP, schedule and land use designations in the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port of Guam Master Plan Update two thousand thirteen report.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risficio. Senator Risficio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number three-twenty-eight dash thirty-two, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill number three-twenty-eight dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-twenty dash thirty-two, L S.
Bill number two-two-zero dash thirty-two, L S, as amended on the floor. Introduced by R.J. Risficio, T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D. An act to require the Mayor's Council of Guam, MCOG, and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, G E P A, to collaborate on the development of an operational plan for the implementation of this act and to appropriate two million dollars from the Recycling Revolving Fund to the Mayor's Council of Guam for the purchase of heavy equipment to be utilized by the MCOG for the collection and disposal of recyclable, recyc-? Junk cars, green waste and other debris.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risficio. Senator Risficio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Bill number two-twenty dash thirty-two, L S, receive nine ye votes, six nays. Bill number two-twenty dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number two-ninety-six dash thirty-two, C O R.
Bill number two-nine-six dash thirty-two, C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Adda, Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Chris M. Duennius, Tommy Morrison, R.J. Risficio, Brant T. McCready, Michael F. Houston Nicholas. An act to amend section six-zero-one-zero-nine and to add a new section six-zero-one-zero-nine-point-one to chapter sixty of title ten, Guam Code annotated, relative to concealed firearms licensing.
Roll call. Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tom Adda, aye. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Tony Adda, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risficio. Senator Risficio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, nay. Bill number two-ninety-six dash thirty-two, receive thirteen ye votes, two nay votes. Bill number two-ninety-six dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. On the nomination of Maria Flor Herrera to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents, all in favor, please raise your ha- raise your hand. Maria Flor Herrera, receive fifteen ye votes, she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Michelle H. Titanou to serve as a member of the Guam Parole Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Michelle Titanou, receive fifteen ye votes, she's duly confirmed by this legislature. We've exhausted everything on the list, I'd like to, uh, ask mostly, of course, the men who are in here, is to wish your wives and mothers a happy Mother's Day this Sunday and for the two ladies, the other mothers here, happy Mother's Day to you. And also as a reminder, please, Monday, do not forget the legislature is hosting Senior Citizens Day. Senator Risficio, you're recognized.
Thank you, um, Madam Speaker. On that note and, um, your wish on behalf of the members of legislature, all of our mothers a happy Mother's Day, uh, this Sunday, I, uh, move that we, that we adjourn subject to call the speaker.
On that motion, without any objection, so ordered.